Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Fall 2023 Town Managers' Public Hearing or this upcoming town meeting which starts Monday night. I'm Beth Rudolph, Town Manager. I think we'll go ahead and get started. So, the goal of tonight's meeting is to go through each of the articles. And there'll be time on each article. I'll pause and leave time for anybody to either raise your hand if you'd like to speak, or you can put a question in the chat, and I will read the question and respond verbally. We typically run the Town Managers' Hearing more as an informational session, so we're not here to debate the matters that will come before a town meeting, but more for people to ask a clarifying question or something else that may be on your mind about a specific article that's coming before a town meeting next week. I believe most of the proponents for each article are here. So if you are an article proponent and you would like to speak on your article, certainly for the two citizens petitions, I will allow each of those folks to speak briefly on their articles just to explain what they are. But if there are questions, I may recognize that the proponent of the various articles of its Board or Committee to answer questions. So with that, we can go ahead and get started. And again, feel free to raise your hands or to put a question or answer question in the chat if you have anything to say along the way. So. Article one, this is a standard article, majority vote to hear the reports of various town officers, boards, committees, including the Finance Committee. If there's any questions on, I'll just quickly, probably quickly go through some of these early ones because I think those are pretty standard articles. Article two is a majority vote, and this is to hear the report of the Planning Board. Article three, this item is on the consent agenda. So as long-term town meeting members will know, we do have some items that we pull off on a consent agenda that are voted at the beginning of the meeting. These items are typically standard articles that come before a town meeting on a regular basis and don't involve substantial financial impact in any way. So this one, Article three, is identified as a consent agenda item. This is an article that is a standard article that comes before us from the Committee on Rules, and this article is being proposed to be indefinitely postponed. The thing I would note is that when we vote the consent agenda, we have to, the quantum of vote is based on the most restrictive article that's on the consent agenda. So all of the items on the consent agenda at this point require a four-fifths vote to pass. The time meeting body can vote to pull an agenda, pull an item off the consent agenda if there's a question on it, and it will be heard in the regular course of town meeting. Article four, this is the article to hear the report of the Capital Planning Committee. And now Article five, this is where we start to get into some of the meat of town meeting. There's a question here in the Q and A. There's a question, do we have to vote four fifths to indefinitely postpone an article? In this case, because it's on the consent agenda, you do have to vote four fifths to indefinitely postpone. But if it was pulled off the consent agenda, it would not require the four fifths vote. So Article five, Article five is our capital planning article this year. There are 20 motions to be heard under Article five. So what I'm going to do, I will go through each motion. There's several slides here that we have. So what I'm going to do is go through each slide and see if there's any questions on each slide before I move on to the next one so that we can get through all six motions that way. So the first motion is for the town to appropriate $865,000 to go towards Town Hall and Library Roof Engineering and Library Roof Immediate Repairs. Motion two is for the town to vote to appropriate $80,000 from the Building Stabilization Fund to go towards Amber School Roof Engineering. Motion three is for the town to appropriate $240,000 from the Building Stabilization Fund to go towards McCall School Roof Engineering. Motion four is for the town to appropriate $100,000 from Building Stabilization Funds to go through, to go towards the DPW Storage Garage Units Engineering. Motion five is for the town to appropriate $150,000 from the Building Stabilization Fund to go towards Library Window Replacement Engineering and Town Hall Window Engineering. And motion six is for the town to appropriate $150,000 from the Building Stabilization Fund to go towards Lincoln School Chiller Engineering. So I will take any questions that folks have on this first slide related to capital. So there's a couple of questions in the chat first from Pamela Court. Is there an overall rubric to prioritize each project with defined criteria? So there is a comprehensive capital planning process that happens before we get to this point at town meeting where the Capital Planning Committee does go through a very detailed ranking process. I would defer to the Chair of the Capital Planning Committee, or I think the Vice Chair is here this evening. If there's specific questions on that capital planning process, if that is what your question is directed towards. So feel free to follow up if that didn't answer your question, or raise your hand if you'd like to. Patty, can you recognize Pamela?
Hi, thank you. I'm well aware that we have a Capital Planning Committee and deeply appreciate the hard work that they put in on this. I'm just wondering if there's any documentation anywhere that can sort of give us an idea of what these projects are and how they were prioritized? Is there any summary? Is there anything that indicates you're going by safety, by cost, by potential future costs? It's something that helps us to understand how these projects are prioritized.
Sure, I guess I would defer to either, I think Roger McPique is here from the Capital Planning Committee if he wants to kind of go through. There is a Capital Planning Committee report that I believe town meeting members have received already. But I don't know if Roger is here, Patty, you could promote him.
Sure, I would start with that, that the first thing they look at is the Capital Planning Report. But if you're asking about the overall process and how we go through the, it sounds like what you're asking is, how do we go through the ranking process? And that process starts out with, we've got a number of criteria that we look at. First, our mandates, so you're going to see in a little while, we have some bridges. And those are things that we have to fix. We're under obligation to the state to make repairs and keep those things. So the first thing we look at are mandates, health and safety is up there. Maintenance of the town assets is up there. And finally, sort of if we ever really got down to this, payback, return on investment. We don't usually get an opportunity to get that far down on the list. So then also the makeup of the committee, which is made up of two members from FinCom, a member each from Planning and from schools and three appointed by the Select Board, are designed to bring together different viewpoints in order to prioritize these projects. Obviously, schools, we want a voice, we want a voice there, and FinCom, we want a weighted voice there. So everybody sort of comes at this from a different angle in order to really sort of represent the town residents and the town interests. During that ranking process, each of us goes through and we vote. This is our number one priority, number two priority, number three priority, et cetera, down through the list of projects that are presented for the individual cycle. That the town manager also has a voice in that process through the representative to the committee. We then take an average of those, and it's amazing, quite honestly. It most often falls out very clearly in the top 10 that we are all in agreement that these were projects that need to clear the hurdle. And the hurdle is the amount of money that we have available for any particular, for any particular cycle. Where it gets a little bit more art than science is when you get down to that last project or two on the list, and we may all sit there and say like, well, do we want to move two projects, two lesser expensive projects up and move one more expensive project down, or vice versa, depending on it? Then we get into a discussion and debate among ourselves about which is the more important project. Out of all of that comes a ranking sheet. And if you're interested, it's a public document. We can certainly give you access to where our final rankings were, but they're reflected in the motions that you see before you.
Thank you, Roger. Any follow-up questions, Pamela? If you're on mute, if you're trying to speak.
I would be interested in seeing that document. That did answer my questions, and I appreciate it. Thank you very much, Roger.
No problem, I'll try and get that to you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, so the next question in the Q and A is from Amanda Lewis, and it says, engineering means that plans will be made, correct? So it does often mean that plans will be made. Sometimes what we do is preliminary engineering, so it might be more of a concept level plan that we're preparing with some preliminary cost estimates. And then sometimes we do like a two-phase engineering approach. So in this case, for the roof projects, we already did that sort of preliminary engineering that was funded last year, and so now we're into the real plans and specifications development on those projects at least. And in other times, there's also permitting that would be required as part of an engineering. So less so for a roof project, but more so if we were doing like a road improvement project, for example, that would require a Conservation Commission approval or a bridge replacement project that requires some state or federal permitting as well. Hopefully, that answers your question. If not, let me know, and you can have a follow-up, either raising your hand or in the Q and A. Roger Wilson asks what the $200,000 is on the roof for McCall. So the cost of construction for the McCall School Roof is estimated at around $3 million. Typically, we say that, you know, engineering costs are somewhere on the order of 10% of estimated construction costs. So that 240 is in the range of what we expect, you know, when we look at construction costs. But it is to develop the plans and specifications for that roof replacement project. And I'm sure Pete Lawson, our Facilities Director, would be able to answer any of your questions more specifically, either via email before town meeting or certainly on the floor of town meeting. Okay, any follow-up or final questions on this slide? If not, I'll move on to the next set of capital articles, motions. All right, moving on, Articles seven through 12. Motion, excuse me, Motion seven through 12. Motion seven is to appropriate $50,000 from the Building Stabilization Fund for Town Hall Bell Tower Structural Review. Again, this, so just following up on the question previously, this is more of a preliminary analysis that will lead to additional engineering and then ultimately likely construction. Motion eight is for the town to appropriate $116,000 from the Capital Stabilization Fund for the Washington Street Bridge Repairs. This is supplemental funding based on actual construction costs or actual bid results that we received for this bridge repair project that exceeded what the original appropriation was. So this is actually supplemental funding, and the contractor has agreed to hold their cost until we have this additional funding in place. Motion nine is for the town to appropriate $150,000 from the Capital Stabilization Fund for Phase One Risk Assessment Implementation. This is to improve some, to design and implement some safety improvements at Town Hall and other municipal buildings such as cameras and lighting and those types of safety improvements. Motion 10 is for the town to appropriate $270,000 from the Capital Stabilization Fund for a new dump truck slash salter for our DPW. Motion 11 is for the town to appropriate $400,000 from the Capital Stabilization Fund for playground equipment and surfaces at the Lincoln School and Venton Owen School. And motion 12 is for the town to appropriate $100,000 from the Capital Stabilization Fund for Shore Road Bridge Engineering. I'll entertain any questions that folks have on these articles. I had a comment that people are having a hard time hearing, so I apologize. I'll try to speak a little bit louder, hopefully that's better. The question in the chat is, how old is the VO playground? So the VO playground was installed as part of the school replacement project. The repairs that are being proposed here is related to the surface. So there's a soft surface under the playground equipment that requires some repairs in that area. And then the question is, what's the distribution between the two schools, between Lincoln and VO? I don't know, then answer that question off the top of my head, Roger. I'm not sure if you.
I don't, we'd have to get that from Pete, but I think it was mostly going toward Lincoln. We're all, the repairs at VO, we need to install a drainage system. The problem is that the rubberized surface, top surface has had water infiltration come underneath it and raise it in places. So this is to install a little bit of drainage around so that we don't have that problem again, and then resurface that top layer.
So the next question in the chat is with respect to motion nine. It says, how many phases are there in this type of activity? So this is the first, there was a series, kind of an initial assessment done several years ago. We've done some work with respect to policies and procedures. And this is the first phase where we're actually kind of looking towards implementation of hardware such as cameras and additional lighting and that type of thing. We are working with the school department. I expect that they will be looking to do some additional work in school buildings. They have been applying for various grants to assist with that. So I can't say overall what the final costs are, but this is kind of the first step in a multi-pronged process for us to improve the safety at our school and municipal buildings. The next question is from Brian Monaglia. Do we have a cost estimate of the Shore Road Bridge total repair cost? We do not at this point. We are, we have just hired a consultant to do what we do, what we call preliminary bridge inspection, which is kind of the first step. And then we'll move into this engineering phase, and then presumably we'll be able to move into either final engineering or straight into construction. The question from Mr. Wilson is, can we replace with cheaper surface at VO? That is a question you have to, I'd have to have directed towards our Facilities Director, Pete Lawson. There's a question from Ruth Trimerkey about whether the DPW Salter Truck can be an EV vehicle. I would defer to our DPW Director on that, who's not on the meeting this evening. But I know that is something certainly that our DPW and all of our town departments look at when they look at acquiring new equipment, and we work with our Sustainability Director as well as our Susan McPhee, who is our kind of energy and environmental consultant on these types of things. A question from Bill McPadden about what type of contingency do we put on our asks? So it varies. If we have, for many engineering studies, we, you know, we have a good idea from our, from our consultants, kind of what the scope will look like for our construction projects. We usually, by the time we get to, you know, 100% plans, we're usually putting on a, somewhere between a 10% to 20% contingency. I will say that the bidding environment that we live in today is, I'm sure anybody who's done a repair or a construction project on your own home will understand is that prices are very volatile. And so I think we all have been carrying a little bit more of a contingency, but even then, we've been surprised, you know, as bids have come in being a little bit higher. And then some, you know, we've had quite a few successful ones that have come in right on where we've expected or even below budget. So it's, you know, it is a, we do factor in a contingency and usually, usually things that come in pretty, pretty, I think we have a good track record over the past, you know, 10 or 15 years. But there are times, especially in this bidding environment, where we do see some things come a little bit higher than we might expect. The question is, will the Shore Road Bridge include a width for a pedestrian bike? I can't answer that question. This is just the first step in the engineering. There's not been any work done on this, on this bridge at all. So I can't answer any questions about what the actual scope of the repairs will be at this point. Okay, any further questions? Is a question from Meredith Mason Crowley, is the funding for Washington Street Bridge preliminary cost estimate? So Washington Street Bridge is a previous, is a previous request that was approved by town meeting. And we did go out to bid with that project, and it did, we bid it as two projects, one for cross-street bridge improvements and one for Washington Street Bridge improvements. That was bid as a package. The project did come in slightly above what our cost estimate was, in this case, $116,000 above what we had available from town meeting. And so we now have actual bid prices from our low bidder for the project, who, as I mentioned, will, has, will hold their bid until we have this additional funding in place and we'll be able to go forward with those improvements. Question from Sue Carney, what year was Shore Road Bridge replaced or repaired? That's a good question. There was some work done prior to my time starting with the town, probably in the early 2000s, where there was an additional kind of barrel of a culvert under the bridge installed. But I don't know with the last time there was any other structural improvements done to that bridge. But I'd be happy to have that answer that question for town meeting. Okay, any further questions? Roger Wilson, there was a concept proposal by engineering firm that included alterations to the Shore Road Bridge. I think there was maybe some concept plans done by the Planning Board years ago when they were looking at kind of like a design suret. That might be what you're talking about. And certainly, you know, we'd be looking to take any of those kind of suggestions. But this is really, you know, just the first step in understanding what the potential structural issues, you know, what the scope of those may be out there. Any further questions on this slide? Okay. We will move on to the next slide. So this is motions 13 through 18. Motion 13 is for the town to appropriate $100,000 from Capital Stabilization Fund for Everett Ave Culvert Engineering. Motion 14 is for the town to appropriate $45,000 from the Capital Stabilization Fund for a DPW manager vehicle. Motion 15 is for the town to appropriate $210,000 from the Capital Stabilization Funds for the replacement of Ginfield Lights, including construction equipment and engineering. Motion 16 is for the town to appropriate $75,000 from the Capital Stabilization Fund for Packer Ellis Tennis Court Engineering. Motion 17 is for the town to appropriate $25,000 from the Capital Stabilization Fund for a new centralized tabulation equipment for our town clerk. And motion 18 is for the town to appropriate $75,000 from the Capital Stabilization Fund for some McCall School HVAC retro commissioning work. Any questions on these articles or these motions, excuse me? Pam, has her hand up, Patty?
I'm wondering what, what the fees are currently for the users of the Packer Ellis Courts and where those fees go, what those fees cover.
I do not know the answer to your question. That program is run through our Recreation Department, but I would be happy to get you the answer to that question. And if you want to send me an email, I'd be happy to have our Recreation Department, Recreation Director, be able to answer your question, Pam. The next question is from Roger Wilson, what's the problem with the tennis court? So the facility needs some, it's a well-loved facility. There are some issues with the rotating wall that kind of holds up the stands from the road along Palmer Street. There are some additional issues with the court and the drainage out there that will all be kind of looked at as part of this, I would call this a preliminary engineering to kind of evaluate the issues out there and be able to, you know, determine what we need to do in terms of next steps for the, to get into the next phase of engineering work. Roger, I don't know if you want to add anything to that.
No, that's exactly, that's exactly right. I mean, the retaining wall, the seating sections, they're dilapidated. They're sort of falling toward the courts themselves. The drainage in that area, the deficiencies revealed themselves rather dramatically this summer with all the rain that we received, and it's washed across the courts. We have some things, some retaining walls that are actually just like two-by-eights staked into the ground that have obviously just rotted, things like that, that need to be evaluated and addressed. And the state of the courts themselves is also a question mark.
Great, thank you. So the next question is, is the Packer Ellis Engineering Study only? Yes, it is, it is what I would call preliminary engineering. And could the courts be more open to the public rather than needing a membership to use them? That's, I think, a question for our Recreation Director. And again, if you're, I'd be happy to get the answer to that question outside of this, of this hearing. Next question is, what's the tabulation for? Roger, I don't know if you have any further background on that.
Yeah, this is, I believe the name is the Mass Voter Act of 2022. It's a requirement that we quickly be able to accumulate and tabulate all the votes in the town. In order to be able to do that, we need a little bit of extra equipment for the town clerk, and that's what this does.
Next question, what is the scope of the Packer Courts project? The stairs and walls and seating area need upgrades. So I think, I think Roger did mention those as future, as things that will be considered as part of this project. And the next question is, as precinct one town meeting member, I can't help but notice that there are no capital improvements noted from Morocco School, which is the oldest elementary school, any reason for that? So our capital plan is based on requests that come through our departments, including our DPW facilities and our school department. I would note that there was several years ago, a debt exclusion override that included, I think what we were calling them was immediate repairs. Yeah, to the Morocco School, including a new roof, some electrical work and some additional kind of interior work. So there is, there has been over the past few years work going on at Morocco School outside of these requests coming forward to capital planning right now. And Chris Nixon, if you want to go ahead, and I see you have your hand raised.
Thank you, Beth. Sure, on that point, I just wanted to reiterate, fellow precinct one town meeting member, by the way, the plan you're referring to is the Morocco Life Extension Plan that was jointly promoted by both the School Committee and the Select Board about three, three and a half years ago. There was a debt exclusion override. We appropriated about $3.7 million to make repairs and some modest replacements to the roof, upgrade some of the electrical systems at the building and some plumbing systems as well to extend the life of Morocco until it could be replaced sometime between 2028 to 2030. That was our commitment at the time. That has not changed. That means a new Morocco, whatever it may be, whether it's a new build or a renovation and an addition, we will go through a similar process that we went through for VO and for Lynch, and we look forward to that. But the district has some work they'll be starting on this year, including an updated enrollment and demographic study prior to updating the master plan. So I think there's absolutely a strong commitment towards the new Morocco. There's just a process that we have to follow together. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Okay, there's no other questions on this. I'll move to the next slide. So motion 19 is for the town to appropriate $90,000 from the Water and Sewer retained earnings for a new dump truck for the Water and Sewer Department. And motion 20 is for the town to appropriate $225,000 from the Water and Sewer retained earnings for the Nelson Street Winchester High School drainage improvements. And this is also supplemental funding to an initial request that came before a town meeting previously. Any question on these two, two motions? One question from Carol Savage, are non-school playgrounds being reviewed for capital repairs? If so, where do they fall on the list? So Carol, if you hang on until we get to our. If so, where do they fall on the list? So Carol, if you hang on until we get to article six, I believe, we'll we'll get to that.
Did you set that up?
Question, does Water and Store have a dump truck? I believe this is a replacement of an existing truck, but Roger, maybe you know the answer to that question.
It is, but I think the truck has already gone away. This this request actually originated. Two years ago and we didn't have the funding for it, so we're finally catching up to. To to fund it.
Great, thank you. All right. Let's move on to the next article, article six. This is a two-thirds vote and this is for the town to appropriate nine hundred and thirty thousand dollars for the construction. Of playground facilities and other improvements at Leonard Field and McDonald Fields, including engineering, construction, drainage and any site improvements. To meet this appropriation, seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars is coming from the stabilization, capital stabilization funds. And the remaining two hundred thousand dollars is coming from FY twenty-four miscellaneous non-recurring revenue. So I will explain that a little bit. So earlier this year, the select board funded. Using ARPA funds, a a safety study of all of our school and municipal playgrounds. And as a result of that, there was a series of requests that came into the capital planning committee during this cycle. And I'm very pleased that the committee was able to prioritize. As you saw previously, the playground improvements at two of our elementary schools and then now at two of our municipals fields. Leonard Field and McDonald Fields. The two hundred thousand dollars that's noted from the miscellaneous non-recurring revenue is part of a payment that came to the town. As a result of a license agreement that we have with EverSource, so they, as I'm sure everybody is well aware, they have an ongoing construction project. In along Cross Street, as part of that, we allowed them to use Davidson Park as lay down space over the summer and falls. For some of their work and so we negotiated what was a license agreement with them that required a financial contribution to the town. And that money is is being applied as it was agreed to in the in the license agreement towards the Leonard Field improvements. And I'm happy to take any questions that folks have on this on this article. The first question was, you have a breakdown of how much goes to Leonard and how much goes to McDonald's? So. I think we're estimating somewhere around four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for Leonard Fields. And for eighty for McDonald Field, only because we didn't already have any sort of preliminary. Concept plan or engineering work done for McDonald Field. We did, the select board did fund some prior engineering work for Leonard Fields. Using ARPA funds. The same next question was, what's the new, what's the estimate for the new Leonard Field? So again, this is just for the playground was estimated somewhere around four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Roger Wilson, are there any? New policies, rest standardization and maintenance of playgrounds? I'm sure as part of this, when we're looking to, as we're looking to really replace three of our major playgrounds. Certainly, our DPW will be involved in making sure that we're able to quickly get. Have designs where we can quickly get replacement parts and easily maintain them. So I'm certain that will be something that will be included when we. Go through this design process. A question, why are these two playgrounds being combined? So it's just, it's it's common for us to make this sort of request where we we have a similar project. Two similar projects in nature that are funded through through one request at town meeting. Through this nine hundred and thirty thousand dollars. That way we're able to kind of economize when we. Hire a designer to look at both playgrounds at the same time and and hopefully we'll be able to bid these projects together, which does often. Lead to some cost savings. Will the tennis courts at Leonard be replaced and renovated? So that was something that we we certainly looked at. There was sort of a. Very high level kind of. Overall master plan that was done for Leonard Fields originally and we were very happy to say we were able to get a two hundred thousand dollar earmark from the state. To resurface those tennis courts. So that's that work should be happening sometime next spring. Certainly before June thirtieth, which is the requirement for us to spend our our state funding. Next question, are there any, were there any costs the town incurred that EverSource license agreement covered? So the town has several agreements with EverSource that are outside of this license agreement. In our pre, in our prior agreements, we have. What we call, the town hires what we call a field engineer. To go out and assist our DPW and engineering department with the observation of the work and to work out. You know, engineering and construction issues in the field. The prior agreements already covered those costs and there's several other items that were covered in those prior agreements. This is this license agreement that was just negotiated this year was related to a new sort of ask from EverSource to use town property. Which is why that additional fee was negotiated as part of that license agreement. Next question regarding EverSource money, is any of that money going towards improvements at Davidson Park and Washington Street? So. We'll get to that in a future article here. And the next question from Mr. Wilson is, what was the plan for the bathrooms at Leonard? So that is something that was kind of looked at as part of the overall master plan and there's been no decisions at this point. About whether or not to move forward with that work. It's it was not part of the request that went to the capital planning committee. This this summer. Any further questions on article six? From Ben Keeler, is there any other work for Leonard Field renovations planned expected outside of the playground? So as I mentioned, there is kind of this master plan that the select board had done using ARPA funds. This piece of the work is focused on the replacement of a playground, which if you've been out there, you'll understand it's in very poor condition and. We had to shut large portions of it down over the summer due to some safety concerns. They will also be relocating part of the walkway to accommodate a slightly larger playground footprint. And then, as I mentioned, we're using state earmark dollars to resurface the tennis courts. But there is no additional work at this point being proposed in that area. The question for Mr. Wilson, are we leaving the bathroom standing? That at this point in this specific request doesn't have, doesn't do anything. To the bathroom facilities out there. It's just focused purely on the playground replacement and that walkway relocate, slight relocation that I mentioned. Any further questions? Seeing none, move on to the next article. Article seven, this is an article that's jointly sponsored by the Capital Planning Committee and Select Board. So as. We were discussing just a minute ago regarding the. Morocco School immediate repairs, that debt exclusion was paired with a debt exclusion to complete the last. Flood mitigation project, which is basically to enlarge the culvert behind the Morocco School that goes under the railroad bridge where the Abir Jana River flows between. The Morocco side and the transfer station side. Since that the time that we went to the voters with that debt exclusion, as. As we all know, construction costs have escalated and so we are now estimating that the project costs, which was originally. Nine point one one million, it has escalated to ten point two million. And so this article gives us the authority to borrow an additional sum of money. In order to meet this increase, we are borrowing an additional six hundred and twenty thousand dollars with this new borrowing authorization of. Just over nine point seven million and then we're also using unexpended bond proceeds from two previous borrowings. Just close to fifty thousand dollars from one and then four hundred and fifteen thousand from another project to cover that difference between. The nine point one one million and the ten point two million estimated costs. I'm happy to take any questions on this one. A question from Roger Wilson, was pedestrian passage under the tracks considered as part of the project? So that was not considered as part of the flood mitigation project. It was considered quite extensively as part of the. Original design for the track community bike way, which as some folks may recall, originally had us going under the tracks of this area and following the route. Of the Abir Jana River. For a variety of reasons, we were not able to accommodate that. This project itself that, you know, that has already gone to the voters through the debt exclusion override process was was is purely designed. As a flood mitigation project with no pedestrian improvements through that area. Any further questions on this one? All right, moving on to article eight. This is an article sponsored by the select board. It fires a two-third vote. As you may recall, we had a project that this request came before town meeting, I believe it was last fall, to install. A new pumping station in McDonald Fields to support increased water pressure to the neighborhoods on Arbor Lane and Wendell Street. These this neighborhood, these neighborhoods were originally on water supplied by the city of Woburn due to these water pressure issues. Dating back to, we have a, we have an intermeasable agreement with the city of Woburn from the nineteen nineties, but certainly some of these. These homes were on Woburn water prior to that. In winter of twenty twenty-one, with the new PFAS regulations that came into place, there was some elevated PFAS. Levels in the Woburn water supply and the town acted very quickly to move these homes from the Woburn water supply on to the Winchester water supply. We did fund the installation of a temporary pump station, which is out there today. This project is. As was previously approved by town meeting in fall twenty twenty-two, was to install the permanent pump station. We did bid that project over the summer and we, these are the the increased costs went up slightly from the one point three five. Was previously million that was previously authorized by town meeting and we are now requesting a borrowing authorization up to one point six million dollars. This this project, again, is based on actual bid results that we have for that for that project. These were these costs. Any questions on this article? All right, seeing none, I will move on to article nine. Article nine is a consent agenda item. This is. This article is to have just over a hundred and seventy thousand dollars appropriated for the community-led service waterline replacement program. This is actually money that was previously funded by town meeting and because of the way it was voted. I had a very specific use that we could only use it for phase two of that program as folks may may know, we have had a multi-year. Program to. Upgrade and remove land services and land decks from the town's water supply system. So this is really. I would call it almost like a housekeeping item that would appropriate these funds that were previously appropriated for this use. To now be able to use them in the current year program. And we expect that we will be back to town meeting for one additional funding round this spring and then hopefully we will be able to finish out that project in total. Happy to take any questions on this item. Right, seeing none. We'll move on to article ten. Article ten is requires a two-thirds vote and the proponent is the select board and it authorizes. The select board to enter into a lease of a point three nine acre town-owned property adjacent to the medical office building at. Nine fifty-five Main Street for parking purposes. Said term of lease being up to twenty years and it authorizes the board to negotiate acceptable lease terms. So for folks who may be familiar with the nine fifty-five medical office building, if you park at the rear of the building and. Go all the way to the north end of the parking lot, there's a little piece that kind of juts out from the the normal boundary of the parking lot. That's actually a piece of land that's owned by the town that was formerly part of the Woburn Loop Railroad Line. And so the town has had license agreements, agreements with the medical office building over the years. But those agreements cannot be renewed in perpetuity and so we are looking to issue an RFP and formally lease that space. Happy to take any questions on this item. There's a question in the chat from Pam Court. I'm confused by article ten. We are leasing from the owner of nine fifty-five who benefits from the lease, who pays, how's it negotiated? So. This is a town-owned piece of property that we would be leasing. There is, as I mentioned, we have to issue an RFP. So there's no guarantee that it would be the owners of nine fifty-five Main Street, although it certainly makes sense with how the parking is and the fact that this piece of property is. Is landlocked. So there's a, there would be an RFP process. Determine who would, who would we would lease the property to. Question from Roger Wilson, how much of the old. RW, I think, right away is still in town hands. I'd be happy to share offline, Roger. I'd be happy to share a map with you that shows. How much of the property the town still owns. It's a relatively small portion of what was the former Woburn Loop Railroad Line. Any further questions? All right, moving on to article eleven. Article eleven. I would note that in your motion book, there was an error in the printing of this article. This is not a majority vote. It requires actually two thirds. I've corrected it here. This, the proponent of this article is the select board and this article would authorize the select board to purchase. A parcel of land located off Waterfield Road containing approximately point zero four one acres of land. It's about just under eighteen hundred square feet. And to transfer from the sale of land account, a sum of hundred and fifty five thousand dollars for the acquisition of this land. So as as some of you may be aware, the MBTA. The MBTA owns this very small piece of lands that's basically in the Waterfield lot towards the front of a lot where the driveway is that you. Come in towards Dagastino's into the parking lot. Apologize, I should have had the plan to put up this evening. We've been working with the T for probably close to ten years. First, for many years, there was a question about whether it was owned by the MBTA or Pan Am or owned by another entity. Finally, the the ownership piece was resolved. It was, it is currently owned by the MBTA. It is a piece of land that is required for the redevelopment of that lot under the proposed plan that this that Civicco has proposed. That is now in front of the planning board and so this article would give the the select board the authority to acquire that land and to pay for the. Acquisition costs out of the sale of land account. I'm happy to take any questions on this one.
Sorry, I had my hand raised. Thank you. I have a question. The the parcel was originally owned by Boston and Maine and. The MBTA acquired it last June for a hundred and fifteen thousand and seven hundred dollars. At least according.
Didn't actually acquired. It was what's called a confirmatory deed, which there's no cash exchanged. It was just confirming that they were the actual. Owners of that property. So they didn't, they didn't pay anything. That was just. Town council would certainly be able to clarify the the legal piece of that at town meeting if you're interested, but.
Yeah, I think that would.
Confirmatory deed, yeah.
I think that would be important. So they they owned it to begin with and.
So again, there was, there was years and years of dispute, probably close to ten years about who owned it. And for many years, the T claimed that they did not own it, but then there was this, like I said, this confirmatory deed. Which did in fact confirm that the T was the actual owners of the property, which then allowed us to begin the conversation about how the town could acquire it.
Okay, so did did we do an assessment of the value of that property, which I believe is eighteen hundred square feet?
So the MBTA did did hired an appraiser and did appraise the property and that's where this hundred and fifty five thousand dollar value was.
Are we doing anything to negotiate that price?
So the town has been working with the MBTA and our state delegation for. Probably close to two years at this point to try to figure out now, one for for part of that was trying to figure out, confirm that the T owned it. But the town in working with MBTA in their procurement process, they are, we are required to purchase the land for what's called the fair market value. And so that is based on this appraisal of the hundred and fifty five thousand dollars.
Are are we allowed to do our own appraisal to counter that fair market value?
I guess that that's not a question I'm prepared to answer this evening, but I'm certainly happy to take that back and we can be prepared to answer that on the floor of town meeting.
Yes, please, and thank you.
Sure. Any other questions on this one? From Roger Wilson, DCR owns a little strip on the other side. Is there any plan about that strip? Not sure exactly which strip you're talking about, Roger, but I'd be happy to, excuse me, touch base with you outside of this about that piece. Any further questions? Right, moving on to article twelve. Article Twelve is a majority vote. This is sponsored by the EFPBC, and this is for the town to vote, vote to appropriate $100,000 from free cash for testing and engineering services for, for repair and/or remediation work associated with the Winchester High School and all the costs incidental and related thereto. So as some folks may know, there's been some concerns about the concrete flooring and a portion of the high school that was retained as part of the original part of the building. There was an initial study done using some funds available through the Winchester High School project. They're, they're very close to kind of using up those funds. So this is the next $100,000 requesting engineering work to evaluate that and evaluate what the next steps might be to make those repairs. Any questions on this one? And if Chris Nixon is still here or wants to make any further comment.
I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions, Beth. I, I, just jumping back into this from capital planning that's going on right now. So I, I apologize if you didn't mention this at the outset. Based on our early observations, we're not seeing any connection between these failures and the actual renovation project, which, you know, wasn't that long ago. The, the damage is all sort of confined to the original structure. And the testing that was done over the summer was very detailed. Took samples back to the lab, and we've been able to actually confirm the chemical, sort of the chemical processes that are going on. That's very helpful and a key part of coming up with the repair and remediation plan. So far as we can tell, this is limited to some areas on the first floor. That's good news. The bad news is it, it, it spreads and it accelerates. So it's absolutely something we need to fix.
Thank you. And there's a question in the chat. Is the company who did the high school responsible for reviewing this at all? If you want to, it's not Chris.
Yeah, so based, based on, so, so first of all, from a very sort of black and white perspective about what their contractual obligations are, I would say no. Based on what we have uncovered thus far, not only are there chemical processes that are, that are contributing to this deterioration, the EFPBC is, is, is frankly sort of pleased that the, the, we've hired a very well-respected forensic engineering team. I like to say they're, they are sort of the McKinsey of this world. They were actually able to get into 90% of all the crawl spaces at Winchester High School. DPW, you know, hasn't hit a number that high. I mean, they, they, they get into every corner, you would think, but there's some tough spots. The engineers were really able to get eyeballs on so many parts of this building. And in that process, they've actually uncovered some, it appears fairly minor, but still of interest, some, some flaws in the original concrete pour from 1969 and 1970. So obviously, the, the, there's no, there's no way anybody's on the hook for something that was poured 53 years ago. And as I said, there's, there's nothing right now that sort of connects this back to our more recent renovation project. However, having said that, i- if in this next stage, if town meeting will approve this funding, we do have a little more testing that we need to do if we uncover anything that suggests that there's a connection. Management will be aware of that, and if we need to revisit this with, with management and council, we will.
Thank you, Chris. Any further questions on this item? We'll move on to Article Thirteen.
One more question.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Sue Carney is asking, is that the area where the pool was to be built, auditorium stage back in the 60s?
So I, if I understand Miss Carney's question correctly, I think the, the original kind of design development drawings did have an area for a pool, but I think it was actually outside that, that footprint, a little closer to the tracks, I believe. And of course, it was never originally built. But we, we are finding some areas where we have some standing water under the building. It's not clear yet if that's contributing to the deterioration. That's certainly something the engineers will be evaluating. We also have a couple of instances where some grade beams appear to be somewhat unsupported. Again, it's not clear if that's been the case since the early 70s or if that's something more recent associated with the water. The areas where we're seeing water, as I understand it, is fairly limited. So it, it, it may be consequential, it may be not. These are all kind of, these are examples of the many different elements that, that our engineer is going to be looking at and evaluating when they come up with their repair and remediation plan.
Thanks, Chris.
And can I just say one other thing too, Beth, and this will be the, the, both the opening and the closing. Winchester High School is perfectly safe for, for occupancy today. Absolutely. It, it's just that this is, this is a problem that's not going to go away. It's going to get worse and it's going to accelerate. So better to address it now. In every year that we wait, it's, it's going to become, you know, more and more extensive, sort of exponentially so.
Thank you, appreciate that. Maybe you want to stick around, we're on Article Thirteen, which is a school committee article. So if there's any questions, I might throw it over to you. This is a consent agenda item where the, for the town to vote to transfer $31,143.73 from free cash to the Sped Reserve Fund. This is the case, we've had, I think, happened last year as well. We had some money from the Massachusetts Special Education Circuit Breaker Funding Program that closed out to free cash in the prior year that we're moving over into the Sped Reserve Fund. This item is on the consent agenda. Any questions from folks on this one? All right, seeing none. We will move on to Article Fourteen. This article is a majority vote and is, the proponent is the Hook Committee. This article, the intention is for the town to accept the provisions of the fourth paragraph of MGL Chapter Forty, Section Three. And I'll read the language here, which is that money is received from the rental or lease shall be kept separate and apart from other town funds in the town treasury and may be expended by the school committee without further appropriation for the upkeep of the facility so rented or surplus space, which is so rented. And any such balance shall remain in said account and be expended for the upkeep and maintenance of any facility under control of the school committee. So the, the general idea is that there are rental funds that this, that are taken in by the school department for school buildings. This would be a new account adopting this provision of MGL that would allow those funds to be used for the maintenance of those buildings or any facility under the control of the school committee. Happy to take any questions on this or Chris, or I don't know if the Chair of the School Committee, Tom Hopcroft, is here, if either of you want to say anything about this article.
I, I think Tom was planning on being here. If he, he may have a comment, if, I don't know if Patty, you can find him if he wants to weigh in. I, I would make maybe one, add one element of, of clarification here, Beth, that Chapter Forty, Section Three, it, it applies to districts even, even when you don't accept the local acceptance provision. And, and therefore, funds that we raise are available to us, but only during the fiscal year and only for those buildings and spaces that are rented. The local acceptance provision that we're seeking support for gives us a little more flexibility, makes those funds a little more fungible. So we're not obligated to spend them by June 30th. And so we, we do have in any, in every summer, in many of our school buildings, upkeep maintenance projects that we're looking to accomplish with private contractors with the support of DPW. Being able to, you know, quickly say yes to, you know, a contractor and some work late in the summer is, is so helpful to us because we're trying to get work done while the building is vacant. So this gives us some more flexibility in terms of timing. And similarly, if we're trying to, you know, work on a project at one elementary school and we're, you know, six or $7,000 short in the funding that we need, but we have a surplus at, at another elementary school where we don't have a need to use those funds right away, those funds are, are simply a little more fungible. So we can kind of pool our resources to get work done. There, there are many projects that we do in concert with DPW that have nothing to do with capital. We, we actually have a threshold for capital planning. We, we don't make any requests below $30,000 for capital planning. And so, you know, the, the, these funds are very helpful for us when we are trying to do projects that fall under that $30,000 threshold. So this basically gives us some welcome flexibility in how and when we can spend that money, particularly when schools are unoccupied.
Thanks, Chris. Tom, do you have anything to add? If not, there's a couple of questions that I'll direct to either you or Chris.
Yeah, I think Chris just outlined most of it, so why don't you have the questions?
Sure. So first question from Roger Wilson is, why is this a good idea? Which I think Chris outlines pretty well. Next question is, what's the current revenue from rentals?
Well, I do not have the number in front of me, but that's information certainly we can pull together for town meeting unless you have it handy, Tom.
I do not have the, the, the amount handy.
Right, there's a follow-up question, that's how much money would be earned? So I think it's similar in, in nature, so.
I think what we, we will try to do to the member who asked that question is, is not only, you know, try to characterize what kind of money we're talking about on the revenue side, but also give some examples, some anecdotes about how we've used that money on the expense side.
That's good. Any further questions?
Yeah, I was just-
Or sorry, go ahead, Tom.
I was just going to add that, you know, this tends to be for smaller projects, you know, so, you know, things, you know, furniture fixtures, equipment, you know, you know, updating, you know, security cameras or access control or AV equipment or, or small fixtures, you know, it's, it's not for major projects that I, I think Weston Dixon had noted, you know, it tends to be smaller projects.
Sounds good. See any other questions? So we'll move on to Article Fifteen. Article Fifteen is on the consent agenda and it's moved in second that $5,000 be appropriated from the parking meter funds to the town's central parking account for operating expenses and all their costs associated with the collection and enforcement of parking ticket revenue. So this is a fairly standard article that we have every year that helps us fund that town center parking account that's mentioned here. Any questions on this one? Okay, moving on to Article Sixteen. This item is also on the consent agenda, so it's moved in second. The town appropriate $60,000 from free cash to supplement the traffic calming account for the implementation of one or more traffic calming measures to mitigate traffic and pedestrian impacts as agreed to in a memorandum of, memorandum of understanding between Eversource and the town. So as I alluded to in one of the previous articles, the town has a variety of agreements with Eversource. This is in particular for the Eversource 345 KV project. And as part of that, the town, through this memorandum of, of understanding, the town will be getting up to $200,000 on a reimbursement milestone basis to put towards specifically traffic calming and pedestrian, pedestrian impact improvements in the project corridor, so Cross Street, Washington Street area. As I mentioned, we do this on a, as Eversource completes or is issued street opening permits for certain phases of the project, the town can request these monies in a reimbursement manner from Eversource. We've done that a few times. Like previously been before town meeting to accept money in a similar fashion. We now have an additional $60,000, which came in at the end of FY23 and closed to free cash. And now we were, we are appropriating that $60,000 from free cash into this traffic calming account for future expenditures towards those improvements. I'm happy to take any questions on this one. Seeing none on Article Sixteen, we'll move on to Article Seventeen. Article Seventeen, it's moved in second that the town appropriate $50,000 from the FY24 miscellaneous non-recurring revenue to make improvements at Davidson Park and Washington Street Park. So this is again, is related to the Eversource 345 KV project. We do, as part of the work they've been doing, the town did have an initial agreement with them to use the Washington Street Park area, which as you're driving north on Washington Street towards Woburn, right across from the 620 Washington Street Medical Facility. There's a, a park area there, right, right near the bridge that may have noticed. Eversource has been using a portion of that space as laydown area. So the first agreement that we had with them allowed them to use that space during the time that they were working near the Washington Street Bridge. And as part of that, they were required to restore that area, to put irrigation and to put some, and to sod the area and put some additional trees and landscaping. So that was the initial agreement. Then they came to us and requested to extend that use of the area through, through this fall. And so the select board entered into an amendment to that original agreement. And as part of that, Eversource paid us $50,000 for the additional use of that space. And so that money came in as a miscellaneous revenue. And this article is to move that funds into a dedicated account that can be used in the future for improvements to either Washington Street Park or Davidson Park. There are no specific recommendations at this point as to what those improvements will be, but there's certainly a lot of discussion going on with the Conservation Commission and other interested parties about improvements in both of those areas. So we just want to make sure that we're able to capture this funding now so it doesn't close to free cash at the end of the fiscal year. And we put it in this account for the future use for improvements to those two parks. And I see there's two questions in the chat. So the first question was from Roger Wilson. Will this include access to the conservation land on the far side of a river? So this does not have anything to do with that pieces. If, if this money will be used in the future, be used specifically either for Davidson Park or Washington Street Park, which does not include the land on the other side of the river, which the town will be acquiring separately through an agreement with the Craft, with the folks who are redeveloping the Craft Foods property. Next question from Megan Blackwell. Are there specific plans for how to improve these parks? So there's been a lot of conversation about Davidson Park over the years. There is, there is a state and federal program through the Natural Resources Defense Fund as a result of the civil action case in Woburn. Whether the town, they did a, a report, they have around, they had around $4.5 million total. Communities Winchester and Woburn were submit basically petitions to this group to apply for projects going forward. We did that, and we did get some funding for Davidson Park. It's up to half a million dollars. We did an initial feasibility study, which was previously funded, that put together some plans for kind of a, a river restoration project in Davidson Park. Certainly that's something that could be considered going forward. But there is sort of a conversation happening now with the Conservation Commission and staff about maybe scaling that back and looking at ways that we can manage some of the invasive species and look at some additional work that could fit within that half million dollars that the NRD Trust has available. And so certainly these funds could be applied towards that in the future, or it could be applied towards other smaller activities like, you know, replacing benches or replacing picnic tables or doing some additional landscaping and that type of thing. So I think there's a lot of possible uses for this funding. I don't think everything's been nailed down at this point. There's a question from Meredith Mason Crowley. If Eversource runs over the agreed end time of the agreement, will additional funds be added? Yes, so I believe the agreement allows them to use the space through the end of November, and then they can continue using it, renting it from the town basically for another $5,000 per month. That was part of the agreement. And certainly we can have the details of that for town meeting as well. Any further question on this one? Move on to Article Eighteen. Article Eighteen requires a two-thirds vote. This is sponsored by the select board. I will note that town meeting members should have received a updated motion today on this, which is reflected in the blue notes here. So under this article, it's moved in second that $3.5 million is appropriated to pay the cost of engineering, acquisition and installation of solar panels and solar panel canopies on or in the vicinity of the Lynch Elementary School and the school's parking lots, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto. To meet this appropriation, $300,000 shall be transferred from free cash. And that we are authorized to borrow $3.2 million. And then related to this project, so the rest of that's just basically standard motion language. So in essence, this, this project or this, this motion would fund the acquisition, the direct purchase of solar panels on the Lynch Elementary School property and in the parking lot. Those panels were- Uh, property and in the parking lot. Um, those panels were not included with the original. School um project because at the time uh it was, there was an assumption made that it was likely that if this building was going to be net zero. That we would, it would be done through a third party ownership model or what's called a power purchase agreement or PPA. Um, since the project was approved by the MSBA and the project funding agreement was approved by the MSBA. The Inflation Reduction Act came into play and there are some additional um. Funding mechanisms available for communities to assist with the purchase of solar panels. And so there's been a. Uh, comprehensive financial analysis undertaken by the select board uh and and. The assistance of the EFPBC to evaluate um whether direct purchase or um a a PPA agreement makes sense. Uh, and the board did vote um to move forward with the direct purchase. Um, and right now, the cost estimate is that the the total package to purchase the system would be approximately three point five million dollars. Um, that we won't obviously know the exact cost of those of that until the Lynch School Project. Uh, bids come in, which is uh on November seventeenth. So it, I don't know if anybody's here from the select board, if um you want to make any further comments on this motion. Otherwise, I will uh recognize questions. I think Michelle just raised her hand. Go ahead, Michelle.
Yep, once I got unmuted. Uh, so yes, uh, last thing I would say, thank you, Beth, for all of that, and I'll be presenting this at town meeting. Um, and looking at ownership, so Beth mentioned there's incentives to the Inflation Inflation Reduction Act. Um, obviously, the school will be net zero. Uh, whether we lease the the roof or we own the panels on the roof. Uh, part of our argument, the the financial analysis is looking at not just owning the asset, but benefiting from the energy that our own roof will generate. Uh, versus having a third party benefit from the energy that our that our roof generates and then the town buys it back. So it's both an investment. Um, in renewable energy, uh twenty-five year useful life, if not longer, because we have some solar panel history in town already. And they remain uh very much efficient, even as you know, as ten and fifteen years go by. Um, so it's an energy effort, it's an ownership effort, and it's a chance to reduce the the energy costs in our operating budget. So. Kind of has a win on the operational side of our running our municipal buildings. That's all I would add.
Thanks, Michelle. Um, there are a few questions and. Um, if you want to stick around for a minute, we can.
Yeah, sure.
Sure, between the two of us probably answer them. Um, any estimate of what the ITC direct payment will be? Would that reduce the amount of money borrowed? Secondly, if we had done this as part of the Lynch redo, would we have received any type of M- MSBA reimbursement? I don't have the financial analysis in front of me. I don't know if you, Michelle, know off the top of your head, the ITC direct payment. Want to say it'd probably be eight or nine hundred thousand dollars.
I don't have in front of me either, so we'll have that ready.
Um, so it's up to thirty percent, um, but because it's a tax exempt borrowing, we we take a haircut. So it's somewhere around twenty twenty-five point five percent reimbursement rate. Uh, on the three point five million dollar capital cost. So I think that works out somewhere around eight to nine hundred thousand. Um. Secondly, if we had done this as part of the Lynch School uh project, would have received any type of MSBA reimbursement? I do not believe so, but I don't know. Um, I think Chris Nixon's probably dropped off to go back on the. Um, the Capital Planning Committee meeting, but he would be, or the EFBC would be the best one to answer that question. Uh, from Roger Wilson, who maintains the town owns solar panels? So it's likely that the town would um enter into some sort of operation and maintenance agreement for the um. For those panels with a a company to assist us um in the oversight of those. And then the question was at what cost annually? So that is factored into the analysis, the financial analysis that was done and and certainly we'll have more information about that. Um, at for town meeting. Um, and then another last question is, are the solar panels supposed to help run several buildings in town or just Lynch?
So I'll I'll start with that. The solar panels are expected to make Lynch net zero. And any additional energy generated, so to run Lynch, yes, to answer the first part. Any additional energy generated from the solar panels that is supplied to the grid, let's say during the summer when the school. It may be running a summer school program, but might be otherwise vacant. Uh, that will come. As credits to the town's energy bill. So any excess energy that the Lynch School doesn't use. That can go to the grid will actually be a credit to the overall energy costs, because I asked that specific question. So the town's. Electric bill will be reduced by the excess energy that the panels might might produce, assuming that we have more sunshine than rain. So. Who knows? Not with a summer like we just had, perhaps.
Okay, and the last question I have here is from John Miller. What is the source of the three point two million? So the three point two million will be borrowed. Um, and the intention at this point is that it would be um. You know, general fund debt that's paid um out of the general fund and would in some, in some level. Um, varying degrees over the the kind of twenty to twenty-five year. Um, analysis period would be offset by the caught energy savings um to the town. And do you want to add anything to that, Michelle?
Nope.
Uh, and a question from Megan Blackfield. Does the Energy Management Committee have an opinion on this article?
Good question, Megan. I will ask. I have not asked.
Any further questions on article eighteen? Okay, article nineteen. Um, so article nineteen is is sort of a backup. Um, if article eighteen was to um pass, then article nineteen would be indefinitely postponed. Uh, this, under this article, it would vote, I would, uh, town, the town would vote to authorize a select board to enter into a power purchase agreement for a period of. Up to thirty years for the purchase of the solar energy generated by a facility to be constructed upon or around the Lynch Elementary School. So under this, if if um article eighteen failed, uh, the direct purchase model failed, the town would um in order to meet our. Um, our desire to have the building be uh net zero, you would. Move towards a third party ownership model under the PPA uh power purchase agreement. Do you want to add anything to that, Michelle?
I do not.
And questions on this one? Uh, from Bill McPadden, back to eighteen, will the amount of ITC received reduce the amount borrowed? Yes, that's the intention. So the idea is that we would do, um, we would do a a ban for, you know, first year or two. And then once we've received that um ITC payment, we would do, we would reduce. The the ban and issue the permanent borrowing based on that reduced amount. Uh, next question was, uh, there was an increase in cost for buying the solar panels. Would this translate to worse PPA deal if we did a PPA? If you want to answer that one, Michelle.
Yeah, so I think we don't yet know that. We would imagine if if the third party power purchasing uh vendor. It it experiences the same cost for solar panels, the same increase in cost that the town would, we would expect to see that. Negotiated as part of the agreement, the long term agreement, and that cost passed through to the town. But we haven't run, we don't have an analysis of what that might look like because we don't have a power purchase agreement um. In hand to negotiate or compare it to. But we would imagine that any increased cost of materials and acquisition would be passed along to the town. So yes, I would expect an increase, but we don't have that calculated because we don't have the details of a specific agreement in hand.
Uh, and two fault questions from Roger Wilson. How does the life of the roof figure into this? Will roof last as long as panels?
Roger, we expect, well, so the story that we heard from our consultant is that there's a solar array that goes back to the Carter administration. That's still working up in Beverly on the North Shore. So the pa- the panels may last longer than the roof, but they should at least be co-terminous. Uh, the panels are warranted. Beth, is it twenty or twenty-five years? I think normally twenty-five years. And I think we expect the roof to be twenty to twenty-five years. So I think they're they're. The useful life of the roof may be shorter than the useful life of the panels, but we expect them to at least be um operational for. Twenty to twenty-five years and warranted on the panel side for twenty-five years.
And a portion of the system, we can't meet all of the energy needs by just using the rooftop area. So a portion of the system will be a. Carport system, which obviously that that doesn't, the the roof expectancy doesn't play into the life expectancy of those panels.
Thank you for that, Beth. Good point.
Okay, any further questions on nineteen? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to article twenty. Thank you, Michelle. Um, article twenty is a majority vote. This is um sponsored by the select board. This is um. Moved in second that the town votes to appropriate ninety-four thousand eight hundred and seventy-two dollars and eighty-nine cents to supplement the opioid settlement account. To be spent in accordance with the Massachusetts State Subdivision for statewide opioid sediment funds. Funds to be used to supplement and strengthen resources available to communities and families for substance use disorder. Prevention, harm reduction, treatment and recovery. And to meet this appropriation, just over seventy-five thousand dollars is funded from free cash. And almost eighteen thousand dollars is funded from FY twenty-four miscellaneous non-recurring revenue. Um, so this is maybe the second time, I think this uh similar article has come before the. Before time meeting. So as folks may be aware, there is this um. State, certainly state, but also nationwide settlement program related to opioid opioid use um with the opioid producers. Um, excuse me, with the prescription drug producers. Um, so the town will be getting between now and. Um, twenty thirty-eight, just over nine hundred and seventy thousand dollars. And this money will come in in various amounts over the year at various times, because there are still new. Um, kind of settlement agreements being put in place. And so this is to basically take what we've gotten since. Um, last springtime meeting, some of which closed to free cash in FY twenty-three. And then some of it has been received in FY twenty-four as miscellaneous non-recurring revenue and placed in this account to be used for this specific purchase. Happy to take any questions on this one that anybody may have. Okay, no questions on article. Nope, someone just came up. Uh, do we have to do this? Yes, we can't just use these funds for any purpose that we want. This is. Dedicated dedicated revenue that's coming in for a specific sort, for a specific use that we have to follow. We signed a legal agreement stating such. Uh, is the Board of Health in charge of programming? Yes, the Board of Health is, and the Health Director are 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 um. Kind of managing these funds and they're working. It's likely that there'll be sort of a coalition put together, various communities that will help. In some way to to um use some of these funds. Um, but we have, I think we've received. Um, to date somewhere around a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So there's obviously a lot more coming down the pike that will be. Um, I have to make some decisions about how to use. Any further questions on this article? Moving on to article twenty-one. Article twenty-one is a consent agenda item. Uh, this is. A standard article that we have um to rescind the portion of a borrowing authorization um that is no longer needed. So this was a. Um, a borrowing that was authorized um in spring two thousand and fifteen for the Aboriginal River. One of the Aboriginal River flood mitigation projects, uh, were able to, the orig- original borrowing was um seven point four or five million. Uh, the amount actually borrowed for the project um was six point seven million, so we're able to rescind. Uh, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Any questions on this one? Okay, moving on to article twenty-two. Moved in second, the town appropriate one million eight thousand and eighty-five dollars from free cash. To the Employee Healthcare and Health Insurance Stabilization Fund established at the spring twenty twenty-two town meeting in accordance with MGL. Chapter forty, section five B. Um, so as you all may remember, the select board. Previously brought forward the creation of this employee healthcare and health insurance stabilization fund to town meeting. Uh, the intention is to be able to use this fund to help offset um, you know, increased costs. Uh, in impacts to our budget as a result of health insurance escalation as well as um stabilizing some of the. Peaks that we may see in health insurance costs to our employees. Um, so we had a very good year in terms of turnbacks last year. From the FY twenty-three health insurance budget of close to, um, excuse me, just over one point two million dollars. And so um, the recommendation that select board did just adopt a policy um earlier this month regarding. How funds would be recommended to be moved into and out of this health insurance stabilization fund. And so the recommendation is that um the stabilization fund value not exceed ten percent of the current year. Health insurance budget. Um, so that's why we are recommending this number, just over one million dollars. Be moved from free cash, the total turnback in the FY twenty-three budget. Um, excuse me, the total turnback in the FY twenty-three budget was just over one point two million dollars. So we're recommending slightly less. Be moved into the stabilization fund so that we're close to this ten percent target for the current fiscal year in a stabilization fund. I'm happy to take any questions folks may have on this one. From John Miller, this is obviously a judgment call by the select board. Why do all the ten percent in a single year? Um, so I don't know, Michelle, if you want to answer that, or I'm happy to. Provide my thoughts on that.
Sure, um, John, a good question. Uh, why do all the ten percent in one year? We had a rather large, not unanticipated turnback. We did renegotiate and and get a more favorable health insurance. Uh, rate for this current year that we're in for employees and and retirees. And with that um savings, we anticipate that that's not sustainable, that we would anticipate. You know, we've already, I think, heard, and Beth can clarify, potentially seven and eight percent growth next year. So this. Recoups, not the entirety of the turnback of healthcare savings, um, but it does provide a hedge against what we anticipate will be next year's rising rates. And the town is very aggressive in negotiating health coverage for employees and retirees. Uh, as often as it can, but uh year over year, you costs tend to go up as opposed to down. And this provides. Um, the money that, most of the money that we saved to hedge against future of future year bills. And Beth, I would ask you to. Add to that, I think we might have a different specific expected rise next year. I just don't know if I'm quoting it correctly.
Yeah, no, that's that's all correct. So if we had um for July first of twenty twenty-two, so FY twenty-three. We um, we changed health insurance providers from Harvard Pilgrims to Blue Cross, Bush Shield, Maya. Uh, products, and we had a significant actual reduction in what we had budgeted in our FY twenty-three health insurance budget, which is why we had this large turnback in twenty-three. That's sort of a one-time deal. It's not a common thing where you're you're underspending, underspending your health insurance budget by that much. And it was really, as I said, facilitated by the change um that we made in health insurance providers. And so I think. Part of it is that we don't expect that we'll really ever be able to to do this again, which is to kind of get it up to kind of the maximum where we. Where we might want that fund to be. And as Michelle mentions, you know, given the trends that we're hearing from our health insurance provider. And from the health insurance consultant that we work with, we're, you know, we're, we're likely to see something on the order of eight to ten percent increase over the next few years. So this, this allows us to have a little bit of cushion built up in that stabilization fund to start. Um. Next question is from Brian Bernaglia. Is the one point two million health turnback factored into the eighteen point five percent reserves number? Yes, so that full turnback in the health insurance budget, which um as I mentioned, was just over one point two million dollars. It closed to free cash at the end of FY twenty-three and is reflected in that free cash number and the reserves number. That was calculated for the end of FY twenty-three. Any further questions on this? Going forward to article twenty-three. This item is on the consent agenda. Uh, and it's moved in second that the town appropriate seventy-five thousand dollars from free cash. To supplement the ever source account for the purposes of engineering and other consulting services regarding the location and construction of electronic transmission lines. In Winchester. So as I mentioned, um, I think in one of the previous ever source articles, as part of our agreement. Um, we are allowed to reimburse for services. We call them field engineering. as part of our agreement, we are allowed to reimburse for services, we call them field engineering services, for a consultant to help the town basically manage the project, oversee the project, ensure that our utilities are being protected, ensure the contractor is doing what they should be doing with respect to the town's utilities and help us to navigate the complexity of the construction project. So this is a standard article that we've had for quite a few years now, where we kind of we kind of front this money for the payment of those consultant services and then Eversource reimburses us, which then that that would reimburse free cash when it closed out in that fiscal year. I'm hopeful, I think we're all hopeful, that we'll be looking at the end of this project this fall and that next spring they will just be doing, you know, final construction and restoration activities. So this this should get us hopefully the the end of the construction for that for that project. Any questions on this article? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to Article twenty-four. This is an article sponsored by the Finance Committee. Motion motion one requires a two-third vote and motions two and three require a majority vote. There are, the first motion is for the town to transfer eighteen thousand two hundred and seventy-three seventy-three dollars from the capital stabilization funds to the FY twenty-four funded debt interest and expenses budget. Motion two is for the town to transfer eleven thousand dollars from free cash to the FY twenty-four Veteran Services expenses. And motion three is for the town to transfer a hundred thousand dollars from free cash to the FY twenty-four Department of Public Works budget. John Miller, if you're still here and you want to make any comments on this, feel free.
No, Beth, I don't think, I, can you hear me?
I can, thank you.
I don't think there's any, this is, these are standard motions, Stacy. This is just end of year account balancing.
Great. Any questions on this? Seeing none, we'll move on to Article twenty-five. This is another article sponsored by the Finance Committee. This item is on the consent agenda. This is moved in second in the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund, voted that the twenty-three springtime meeting be decreased by just over ninety-four million, ninety-three million dollars, decreasing the funding from the property tax levy and then increasing funding from the water and sewer receipts. And this is again a standard article we have that kind of trues up the FY twenty-four budget because what was approved at springtime meeting was based on estimated MWA assessments and estimated debt service payments. Any questions on this or comments you want to make, John?
Nope.
And then Article twenty-six. This, again, a majority vote proponent is the Finance Committee. Moved in second and then the town reduced the Recreation Department receipts for FY twenty-four by two hundred and eighty-seven thousand two hundred and thirty-three twenty-two dollars and fund the budgetary shortfall by use of the same amount from retained earnings. And John, any comment you want to make on this one?
No, again, this is an accounting correction that we need to make. There's the state law that interferes with how the Rec Department's receipts are growing. So but you can't estimate in in advance, you can't make mistakes on past estimates. So this is just a transfer in to transfer out, so eventually we'll stop, be able to stop doing this.
Great. Thanks, John. Any questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to Article twenty-seven. Article twenty-seven is on the consent agenda. It's moved in second, the town votes to appropriate two hundred and five thousand seven hundred and two dollars and thirty cents from the Peg Access and Cable Related Funds to be used for Peg Access Service Programming, monitoring the cable operators' compliance with franchise agreements and to prepare for renewal of the cable franchise license, including any associated expert and legal service. So this is a standard article that comes up every year related to the to the, how we manage the facilities and produce programming on the public educational and government peg access channels of Comcast and Verizon. Any questions on this one? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to Article twenty-eight. Article twenty-eight is on the consent agenda. It's moved in second, the town votes to appropriate seventy-five dollars from free cash to pay the, an expense that was incurred in FY twenty-three. So every so often, we have these kind of issues come up where we have a prior year bill that didn't make it through or didn't make it to the town and didn't make through the process in time to be factored in under the prior year budget. So this is requires to go to town meeting to to allocate free cash to pay that bill, in this case, seventy-five dollars. So I think we'll take it, given the other requests we have from free cash at this town meeting. Any questions on this one? Article twenty-nine. Article twenty-nine, so Articles twenty-nine and thirty are both citizens petitions. And I will, I think Timothy Matthews is the proponent or one of the proponents for this citizens petition. I'm happy to turn the floor over to you, Mr. Matthews, if you want to provide any comments on this before we open up to town meeting members for questions. Again, I just want to remind everybody that this is not, this meeting is not intended for debate, just for questions.
Absolutely. Thanks. Thanks so much, Beth. Can you, can everyone hear me? Great, thanks. So I just want to start by clarifying that Articles twenty-nine and thirty aren't linked. I've certainly heard a couple of questions about that. I see them as having different objectives and they came from different starting points. I'm actually, first I should probably say I'm a town meeting member from Precinct One. And I also have an education background and I was following during the last springtown meeting cycle the process of creating an education budget and started to think about how we might build a more representative process as I followed along with that cycle. So I guess my my sort of broad point tonight, not engaging in any debate as the proponent of Article twenty-nine is to speak positively about some changes that I think Winchester could make to enhance our process around Finance Committee and Budget. This is not a response to any specific or recent conflict. I think really the goal of Article twenty-nine is to refocus Finance Committee on its charge, which is as an advisory body to town meeting. I think we all know as town meeting members that the power to raise and allocate revenue for the smooth operation of Winchester is really vested in town meeting and no other board or committee serves in that that unique overarching decision-making role. So FinCom, as an advisory body to town meeting, needs to provide valuable and balanced advice and analysis that draws from the diverse knowledge of Winchester's committed and knowledgeable citizens. And it's that advice that then empowers us as town meeting members to make more informed decisions about the most vital topics in the life of our town. FinCom isn't intended to be a policymaking body. The the primary responsibility is really to guard against financial malfeasance and make sure everything is above board. I think that there's a lot of text on the screen right now and I just want to say that the edits that are made to the Winchester Bylaw around Finance Committee in this article fall into three categories. The first category is that I'd like that we ensure maximal transparency and openness. I think that the important decisions that town meeting members make rest on the shoulders of the research and recommendations that are made by FinCom and other committees. And those recommendations end up being interdependent with one of one another, right? So the the work of other boards and committees like Select Board, Capital Planning Committee, Planning Board, Board of Health, they have to work in concert with and in collaboration with the work that that FinCom is doing. And everybody has to work together with trust and a spirit of comedy and community. And as the Communications Study Committee noted previously, more transparency is really needed for good governance in Winchester and to better disseminate information to all stakeholders. So there are four changes under this bucket that are in that large block of text on the screen. One of them is that FinCom hold at least one open virtual meeting similar to this as they're engaging in their process for town meeting. That number two, that they work with town staff to determine which articles actually have financial implications and really focus their work on those. Number three is to provide more visibility into the full spectrum of debate within the committee so that it's not just necessarily the majority recommendation that's reported, but sort of all the dimensions of the debate that took place. And it's also fourth codifies the necessity of complying with state law around service on political campaign committees. The second big bucket for these changes is to ensure representation from all precincts. Winchester's current bylaw provides no guardrails for broad representation. And without that, there's a risk that perspectives would be missed or bias introduced. I believe that Finance Committee needs to provide a balanced perspective that faithfully represents those from all walks of life who call our town home. And so there are four other changes that go under that bucket. One of them is moving to an eleven-member committee that aligns with the town's population and size of budget. I did an extensive comparison against peer communities. And this, I think, will make it easier to recruit qualified candidates, especially due to the the burnout factor that we've experienced. I think the second thing is that it ensures that there are actually members from all precincts. And number three, there would be no more than two members from any single precinct. And finally, number four, time is required off the committee after serving two terms to make sure that that different voices are represented at the table. And then I think the third and last bucket is that the current appointments process is is somewhat unusual, especially looking across Massachusetts communities. And it's not really rooted in town meeting. And as I said, it's, you know, this is an advisory body of town meeting. And I think we learned as a town over the summer that our appointments processes do have some challenges. And so I think that as a constituent body of town meeting, the appointments should be participatory and rooted in the work of town meeting, which serves as Winchester's legislative branch. And that's why this new process really focuses on having a large majority of the members appointed by precinct folks on town meeting that are serving in their precincts. And so there are two additional changes under that bucket. First, that there are eight seats selected, one each by each of Winchester's eight precincts. And then number two, the moderator would then add three seats. That's to not make the moderator have outsized influence, to really leave that in the hands of town meeting members, but that that moderator can consider needed expertise. I just want to finish by saying that I'm happy to talk to anyone or answer any further questions. As I said, I'm a Precinct One Town Meeting Member. My contact information is available, so feel free to to reach out. I've also already fielded some questions from the Government Regulations Committee. Thank you so much to that and also for the assistance of the Town Manager and Town Council in making some minor language changes. So thanks so much for the opportunity to to present, Beth, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you. First question in the in the Q and A. What happens legally if nineteen and thirty, or excuse me, twenty-nine and thirty both pass? So do not have Town Council on this call this evening and I would defer to him for any answers to that question. Certainly something we can discuss on the floor of town meeting. Any further question on Article twenty-nine? Oh, it looks like Jared Cummings has his hand raised.
Hello, can you hear me?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Beth. Thank you, Tim. This is Jared Cummings, Precinct Four. Tim, are you able to provide information in terms of how many towns you looked at for this? The link that was sent originally had one. And can you list the towns that you can consulted about this?
So I'm not sure, I'm, Jared, I'm not sure where where you got the information that there's only one link provided. I think the only link that was in the the motion text was actually the Massachusetts Association of Finance Committees does not actually publicly publish its handbook. And so it's somewhat elusive to actually try to get your hands on. It happened to be that there is a community in Massachusetts that had posted it on their town website. So it didn't, that town didn't have anything to do with the deliberation that I I did do. It was just that they they happened to have a publicly posted version of that that didn't require you to enter your information and and actually try to get that from that that group because it's it's not publicly available. You have to actually go through a process to to apply to get a copy of that PDF. But sure, I mean, I'm happy to, I mean, we can talk about this on the floor of the of town meeting. But I looked at, I believe it's sixteen communities that had populations between twenty and thirty thousand, which is the the sort of band that Winchester operates in. I think if you get below that or above that, it starts to somewhat change the nature of, you know, the the balance of the the committee relative to the town population. So I tried to sort of limit it to communities, especially in our our area, more or less inside and just slightly outside the one twenty-eight belt that felt sort of between a twenty thousand and thirty thousand person population. But happy to share that list. That'll that'll be in my presentation on the floor of town meeting.
That'd be helpful. And again, the the link went to one particular town, which is where the number one came from. It would be helpful for the presentation if you could also conclude include the denominator. So if there's sixteen towns out of how many, so we understand what percent we're talking about and if there are towns and what percent, don't do it this particular way. So that would all be helpful information as we're starting to think about about town meeting.
So I just want to, let me just say one more time because I want to be very clear about that one town. That was just a link to the state of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Finance Committee Handbook in a place that it was freely available. That is actually not a town that I looked at at all. It just happened to be a freely available copy of the statewide book that has substantial amounts of information, and I encourage people to to take a look at that if they're they're doing preparation.
Great, thank you. One question in the chat, how many members do FinComs in other towns have?
I I'm happy to to take that. So the the most common sizes tend to be actually much lower. So seven and nine are the modal numbers of members. I think that the, that's based on the, that's information based on the Massachusetts State Handbook of Finance Committees. I am going to speak about this more on the floor of town meeting. I I I, it's kind of hard to do in this setting because I think a chart would be really helpful. And I I don't have that to, obviously, the ability to put that up on the screen. So stay tuned. There is a whole other layer of of way in which I looked at it. And that's why I was saying to to Jared's question about focusing on the twenty to thirty thousand population communities because I think those are our most relevant peers.
Great.
Hopefully that answers the question.
Thank you. Any further questions on Article twenty-nine? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to Article thirty. Thank you, Mr. Matthews. Article thirty is a majority vote. This is also a citizens petition. I believe we have the project or the proponent on this evening as well. If you want to make any comments regarding this article, please feel free.
Good evening. Thank you, Beth, and thanks to those in attendance. My name's Steve Boxansky. I'm a Precinct Four Town Meeting Member and the main proponent of Article number thirty. I want to thank the previous speaker for providing a lot of good information and background on on the importance of Finance Committee. We share that in common. We also agree that there's some room for improvement on reappointments. And that that's really specifically what Article thirty is focused on. And this 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 bylaw would establish a clear practice by which reappointments to the Finance Committee are made. And really, just because there is no formal process in place right now. So I think we've seen some disagreement over how this process should unfold. And to me, the best way to move forward was to put a process in place and and then abide by it. So it's an incremental change to the existing statute. And I think talking to some current and former members of the Finance Committee in town and beyond, the feedback on this was positive and helpful and constructive. So I'll leave it at that and happy to answer any questions at your convenience. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions on this one for Mr. Boxansky? Okay. Seeing none. Thank you for your time and we will move on to Article thirty-one. Article thirty-one is a majority vote. This article is sponsored by the Conservation Commission and it relates to some changes to the Permanent Street Tree Committee. I don't know if David Miller, who is the Chair of the Commission, is here, if you want to make any comments on this article.
Yes, I'm here. Thank you, Beth. I'm happy to make some comments. Yeah, this is David Miller, the Chair of the Conservation Commission. The, there is an existing public shade tree bylaw which was voted into town, a town meeting two thousand and twelve. The bylaw also specifies the creation of a permanent street tree committee. The existing bylaw language as relates to the committee was not particularly clear in a couple of methods. And similarly was, it turns out, somewhat out of date with regard to its membership. And so this proposed amendment, which is only to the portion of the bylaw which speaks to how the membership of the committee is determined, is what we are proposing to both fix a problem with the bylaw, but also to add some additional resources which have come to the town over the years since the bylaw was passed. And this language picks up what those proposed changes are.
Great, thank you. There's one question in the chat from Roger Wilson. How is the current committee constituted, size, who appoints, etc.?
The current committee, the current language in the bylaw includes the Conservation Commission, the Planning Board, the Design Review Committee, and Town Forest Committee. And it also puts the tree warden as a member of the committee. The Town Forest Committee no longer exists, and the actual method of the committee voting is unclear in the original language. This seeks to remedy that by substituting the Climate Action Advisor Committee for the no longer existence Town Forest Committee and adds a at-large member to bring the voting committee membership up to an uneven number.
Great, thank you. Any further questions on Article thirty-one? Okay, seeing none. Thank you, David. We will move on to Article thirty-two. This is a majority vote. This is actually the same personnel board article that we see every year. We had a short period of time where the Personnel Board did not have a quorum of its members. So I, as town manager, co-sponsored the article, but they are now back up and running with four members, which is, does meet the quorum. So they will be the proponent speaking on behalf of this article at town meeting. There are six motions under Article thirty-two. The first three shown on the screen here relate to the settlement of the contract with the DPW Workers Union. So the first motion would approve the revised compensation schedules. And then motion two would fund retroactively the FY twenty-three wage increases. And then motion three would fund the FY twenty-four wage increases. Any questions on these three motions? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to the next three. So these the motions four through six are not related to the DPW Union Contract Motion Four is makes a change to the Recreation Compensation Schedule or the R Schedule, which it adds a new R eight position and category for a Licensed Childcare Assistant Director and reclassifies the items that are currently R eight into a new R nine category. There is no wage increase on those items that are being reclassified from R eight to nine, R nine. They just are just shifting down and renumbered to R nine. Any questions? Actually, let me go through these three motions, and then we can take questions on all of them. Motion five amends the town's compensation schedule effective January first to add a new position description for a Pete as a new professional technical PT fourteen Building and Zoning Application Coordinator. This was something that was actually budgeted as a part-time position in the FY twenty-four budget. And we are coming back to town meeting to actually create this position and associated job description. And then finally, motion six is again amending the compensation schedule effective January first to create a new deputy tree warden stipend. So our tree warden is, our DPW director is our tree warding. But it is a expanding list of duties that that position helps to carry out. And as reflected in the prior article from our Conservation Commission, obviously something that we're looking to to continue to improve on. So this would create a stipend for a deputy tree warden to help our tree warden to complete their duties. Any questions on motions four through six on this article? Chris Nixon, go ahead.
There we go. Sorry, I was on mute for a moment. Thank you, Beth. I'm just curious, does the the tree warden title, as you mentioned, is attributed to the DPW Director? Does the DPW Director actually receive a stipend for for that work? And how would the stipend for the deputy tree warden compare to that? In other words, is it is it sort of equivalent work? Are we creating this position because, you know, Bob has a full plate and doesn't have time to deal with trees? Or is it is it that we really have twice as much work we need to do with trees?
So by charter, the DPW Director is also the tree warden, so it's not, there's not a stipend associated with it for the DPW Director. I think this has certainly been something where there's been an expanding role, right? And certainly, there's a lot of tree-related things that the town does. And as we, over the years, have participated in the Tree City USA program. And we, you know, made sure that we're on compliance with Mass General Law in terms of tree hearings and that type of thing. And also just, you know, managing planting of new trees and working with residents when they might have a tree near their property that is problematic, a town tree, or determining whether it is a town tree. So there's a lot of staff support that ends up being required. And so this would create kind of that stipend specifically for one staff member to help support the tree warden in that role. And again, I would rely on our DPW Director to answer any specific questions that you might have about that, Chris, either ahead of town meeting or on the floor.
No, that's helpful. I appreciate it. Thank you, Beth.
Sure. Roger Wilson asked, how big is the stipend? I believe it's forty-two hundred dollars per year. It's in, it's in the the art, the motion, separate motion packet that you received Article thirty-two from the Personnel Board. Any further questions on Article thirty-two? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to Article thirty-three. This is a majority vote, and this is a article sponsored by the Select Board. This was to hear the report of the Community Preservation Act Study Committee, which was a committee recently created by the Select Board to evaluate the possible consideration for adoption of the Community Preservation Act in Winchester, potentially coming before town meeting in the spring and possibly coming to the voters in November of twenty twenty-four. Any questions on this article? Seeing none. Article thirty-four and thirty-five have no motions currently under them. So with that, unless there are any further questions, I think we've included tonight's hearing. If there are specific things, oh, Richard Hen has his hand raised. Sorry, go ahead, Rich.
Yeah, thanks, Beth. I'm sorry I had to, I went over to the Capitol Planning Meeting. I missed the discussion on Article seven. So I had a couple of questions about that, if that's okay. So one is just on the the mechanisms of, I'm not familiar with another time in which a project that had been, was being funded by a debt exclusion override that had been voted by the voted in by the voter, accepted by the voters that we had gone back and increased the appropriations on. So I'm just curious, is, does this have to go back before the voters for this?
It does not. So the, so the debt exclusion override that goes to the voters does not include a dollar amount. So there's, there is a process that we had to go through with a letter that we put together with our consultant explaining the the cost increase, that it was a result of cost escalations and not as a result of expanded scope. So that would, that's critical to note that, you know, this, this isn't a different project. This is just a slightly more expensive project because of everything that's kind of happening in the world today in terms of cost escalations. And that that goes to the Select Board who formally votes it. And there's a formal process for us to go to DOR to get this approved before we can come back to town meeting. We did go through that process previously and did get that approval from DR, which is how we're able to now to come to town meeting to make this request for an increase.
So this appropriation essentially raises that debt exclusion override on the voters voting a couple of years ago.
Right. So as noted here, it raises the borrowing to just over nine point seven. But some of this, some of it is, of that increase is being paid through unexpended bond proceeds from other borrowings.
And secondly, I, as I recall, the MWRA had a sewer line project that was going through that same area at about the same time. So I was just curious if this appropriation is passed by town meeting. Do you have a projected start date and then have all of the permits?
For this project, so.
For this particular project?
Yeah.
All the permits, are all the permits approved?
The permits are not all approved. We still, we're waiting to sign off on our MBTA permit, and we have our application in for chapter ninety-one license that has not been granted yet. We expect to have those permits in hands and be able to go out to bid next spring for this project or late winter or spring timeframe.
This project's not been bid yet.
It has not, no.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Chris Nixon, I need to see your hand raised. You're on mute, Chris, if you're.
Sorry about that. Thank you. Yeah, I just, I had a very broad question about town meeting in general. As far as you know, are we taking articles in numerical order? Are there any articles that the moderator is intending to take out of order or on specific evenings?
I believe the moderator is here. I don't know, Heather, if you want to answer that question. She answered in the chat that she expects to go in order.
Terrific. Thank you very much.
Meredith Mason Crowley has a question. I think this might be back to the conservation article. Has the tree warden been a voting member of the PST? I don't know if David is still here, or we may have to hold that question for town meeting. I see, David, if you want to answer that. You're on mute, David, if you. David, you're on mute. I don't know if you're able to answer that question.
I'm sorry, I'm here now. This is David Miller.
Go ahead.
I missed a question, though, so apologize.
Sure, sure. Has the tree warden been a voting member of the PSTC?
The language is unclear in the existing bylaw, and it's my understanding that town staff is generally not voting members of committees, which is part of the reason we're modifying the bylaw, proposing to modify the bylaw to clarify that.
Thank you. The town moderator just wanted to clarify that there, she's aiming to move through all of Capitol on night one, pending town meetings needs. Okay, anything else?
Roger has one last question.
Oh, thanks, Patty. Since we are back on the tree warden, there's a stipend for after our work. So this is in addition to the duties for whatever position this would be assigned to. There's no, it's a, it can be assigned to various, you know, any staff person within the DPW. Okay, any further questions? All right. Well, I think everybody for your time, and certainly we're looking forward to seeing everybody on Monday night. And if there's anything that comes up before Monday, please feel free to reach out to me. It's be Rudolph at Winchester.us, and happy to get any questions answered that I can before town meeting starts. Thanks, everyone. It's brudolph@winchester.us and happy to get any questions answered that I can before town meeting starts. Thanks, everyone.
The language is unclear in the existing bylaw and it's my understanding that town staff is generally not voting members of committees, which is part of the reason we're modifying the bylaw, proposing to modify the bylaw to clarify that.
Great, thank you. The town moderator just wanted to clarify that she's aiming to move through all of capital on night one pending town meetings needs. Okay, anything else?
Roger has one last question.
Oh, thanks, Patty. Since we are back on the tree ward, there's a stipend for after our work. So this is in addition to the duties for whatever position this would be assigned to. There's no, it can be assigned to various, you know, any staff person within the DPW. Okay, any further questions? All right, well, I thank everybody for your time and certainly we're looking forward to seeing everybody on Monday night. And if there's anything that comes up before Monday, please feel free to reach out to me. It's brudolph@winchester.us and happy to get any questions answered that I can before town meeting starts. Thanks, everyone.